All right, we've returned from our break. We just viewed the Vex Robotics demonstration and what an enlightening experience that was for all of us, I believe. Our next item is our consent agenda and it starts with the budget amendments. Ms. Klutz is here to talk to us about the budget amendments that we have.
My presentation won't be nearly as exciting.[26.77][26.77](Laughter). So I have two budget amendments for you today, kind of light on the budget amendment side. And so the first one will be our state amendment. The first one is just the normal reimbursement for substitutes. The next one is a nice little addition. It's an increase in the allotment for a special engine contingency. So if the state has additional transportation dollars in their coffers, you can apply for those funds. And we had to replace quite a few engines this year and so we were able to get basically our money reimbursed at $124,000. So that was extremely helpful. The next one is the summer reading camp allocation. And so that'll straddle fiscal years, but the allocation comes in and this year we'll start spending it and buying supplies and that type of things. But the camp is in July, I believe. July, yes. Okay. But any questions on the state budget amendments?
That for the camp, isn't that a little bit more than we received last year? I was thinking we received about 400 and something last year, or am I...
It was actually very, very similar, surprising. Now, the previous year, now, when we first started it, we only started, we only did third grade, but now we're doing first, second, and third grade. So of course, when we increased the grade levels, we got more money.
Okay, so that 400 was...
Probably what you were thinking about the first year, maybe.
Okay, so this is about what we got last year then?
It is very, very similar.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can you speak to the number of children who will be in the program this summer?
I can't, but Ms. Angel can.
Well, at another time, maybe.
Okay, okay, sure, we can get you that information. Okay. All right. So our next budget amendment is our federal funds. And primarily here, we've just got some minor reclasses, trying to clean up and spend some money at the end of the fiscal year. And if you have any questions on those, I'll be glad to help you with those. And that's all I have.
All right, board members, consent agenda? Consent. All right. That will move us on to policies on the first read. Ms. Reimer and is Ms. Burns coming as well?
Yes, you are.
So we have four policies this week in first read. They're all related. We did have them up last month and pulled them based on some language. So Policy 1310-4002 Parent Involvement, this is a PLS required change. It updates the list of required parental notifications in Section B, and lists the activities that require parental permission in Section D to reflect the new requirements of the federal law, and updates cross-references. Policy 3020-3560 Title I Parent Involvement, this is a PLS required change. This policy has been renamed and extensively revised to reflect requirements of the new federal Title I law. All changes are required, and it updates the legal references. Policy 1400 Governing Principal School Initiatives, this is a PLS required change, corrects a policy title and updates the list of policies that reflect school initiatives. Policy 500 Schools in the Community, this is a PLS required and recommended change, requires assessment information to be published on the school website, adds an internal policy reference in Section A, and updates the cross-references.
Board members, are there any conversation around any of these policies? Ms. Burton-Ball?
Doesn't need to be green. Okay. I sent questions in about the policies and just getting kind of a comprehensive set of cross-references on the bottom of each policy, if we can, so that it better defines the protection. So you have family engagement, but then family is a loose term that could mean lots of things. So as long as the policies that, and the legal references that protect the legal family entity and the privacy of the parents, so desire not to share certain things for whatever that parent's reasons are, that they will be protected. So we did send that to the attorneys today, so Mr. Armicas may want to speak to that.
No, I think, well, I think the cross-references are good. This is really a balance between the federal requirements in terms of working with the family. It doesn't supply perp and those requirements, and I think that's the, you know, I think that's the challenge of the policy language you're getting from PLS is trying to make that balance work. So I think adding, but I think adding those cross-references is a good idea. We'll work to make sure those are put in.
Any other comments on any of these items? Consent agenda, as long as we have the changes, or do you want to put it on action so that you can see the changes in the policies for this first read?
Action.
Action agenda for next week?
Anybody has a group? Put your separate.
Right, okay, yeah. Because I assumed that you were talking about all of the policies, because a lot of them had parent in them, so.
Yeah, of course. I think I need to hear that.
They all have the same language.
1310 and 1320.
Yeah.
All right, so that carries us to 5.3, which is the policies for approval on the second reading. And Ms. Burns, Ms. Reimer are still here to talk with us. Are there any, is there any feedback on any of these policies that they have? I'll open the floor.
My feedback is, I guess, the same as before, when I voted against the Policy 7720, as well as Policy 2500. Maybe pull up maybe Policy 2500. I don't think, I think the language of the two statements contradicts each other, first of all. If you're going to put in there that it is a requirement for information to be submitted, and then you put in a conditional statement at the, right after that, that explains what to do if they do submit it, well, then obviously the first statement is not an absolute like it's written. The suggestion last month was to put some sort of conditional language in the first sentence so that it matched the conditional language in the second sentence, which I fully support. The next policy that I don't agree with is employee political activities. And I agree that with someone else who made a suggestion, there in about the fifth paragraph says item one, take place during school time or during approved leave time. I think that absolutely covers exactly what we need to say so that employees feel comfortable participating, just like the policy says, in the first paragraph, I believe, on that page.
Unless employees using approved.
That's right. Just above it, it says that those rights to participate will not be infringed on due to employment in the district. If we're employing somebody and we tell them they cannot participate and they have approved leave, I believe that we are violating that policy. It says will not be infringed upon due to employment in the school district. I think it's taken care of just by that simple statement Rob just said after point one. Take place during school time or during...
Unless using...
Unless using approved leave time.
Is there, is anyone else wish to speak to these, this item? On, let's see, that was the 7720, which was the second one that Mr. Powell talked about with some language change. Mr. Powell, I couldn't follow you on the first one, because I wasn't sure exactly. Were you talking about Policy 2500?
Yes, sir. If we could pull that up, that'd be great. It currently says, "A party must provide the board with a copy of any document, documentary evidence and the names of additional witnesses at least four, two workdays prior to the hearing." That was a change. Then it says, "Upon receipt of any new information, the board may reschedule the hearing to prevent a threat of substantial unfairness." So we'll receive, we'll receive the information, even though the previous policy says a party must provide the board with copy of any documentary evidence and the names of additional witnesses prior to, two working days prior to the hearing. So in other words, they can't give it to us within two days, but if they do, then there's a statement after that. I don't, I don't think it's near as important to limit the amount of information or when it comes in, as long as we have that last statement, "Upon receipt of any new information." We can change that to, I personally don't think any of it is necessary, but the second statement could be modified into more of a conditional statement that we don't have to hear the hearing at that time, or have to participate in the hearing at that time.
Mr. Ball, let me clarify what I think I heard you say. Basically, you're contending that we don't really need the sentence, "A party must provide the board with any documentary..." Well, we could combine that into the second sentence and say the board, "A party must provide the board with a copy of any document, documentary evidence and the names of additional witnesses," period. "Upon receipt of any new information, the board may reschedule the hearing." You don't have to put the actual working days in there. Is that what you're...
Yep.
I think that's what I hear.
That sounds great.
Okay. Ms. Burton-Ball?
Yeah, the, I actually like the two days leave time. I don't mind if we consolidate it somehow, but when it sometimes takes two or three weeks to get all parties together for a hearing and to, I know the board would feel badly if we had to cancel at the last minute because we didn't have time to read documentation, and that has happened in the past, where we've had to excuse everyone while we sat here for 30 minutes and read through things in a rush. So I'd still like to have that in there as the strong suggestion that we may need to cancel if you don't do it. So I think it's for the convenience of everyone, including the person who has filed the claim.
And basically, this was put in place because the hearing date may have already been set. And we're saying, you know, if you're going, if this information maybe came to light, say they all of a sudden got a doctor's, some information from a doctor, or they got additional information, that could be pertinent to the case. We need to have this, or maybe they ran across this information and it was not in the packet or something, and this could have a bearing on the case, or they found some documentation. And it could be pertinent to it, and we need to have this prior to us seeing this.
Because I know, you know, sometimes folks get rushed and can't read everything, but I mean, I sit down and highlight and write notes and whatnot, and if I don't have it ahead of time, as Carolyn said, I'm not going to be able to give either side as fair of a view as if we're rushed to read it on that day, so.
And again, if it's a witness, that person could have a job and could not be scheduled on the date that we have already scheduled something. A lot of things can happen.
Do we, I've participated in a lot of appeal hearings, and I haven't had a list of witnesses given to us at any appeal hearing. Is that, do we, we never know. I mean, I know we've had one appeal where a witness was told they couldn't participate and was left in the hall lobby until they came in and then was forced to leave. That was kind of sad and tragic, but I think maybe eliminating that witness piece, because I don't want to feel like, I don't want people to feel like they can't bring a witness or present information because of a policy that we have, when it sounds like Carolyn certainly supports knowing the information, even if it surfaced late.
Yeah, I think it, bringing a witness at the last minute is a little different. I mean, certainly, we're asking for the preparation, but if they're, having the written information is the most important upfront. We don't know what a witness is going to say or not say when they walk in, but I think it's that having the documentation is the most important. Although we would hope that in any appeal hearing like that, that the person is prepared enough, when they're coming for their sake, that they know who's coming with them and what their plans are to communicate their side, so.
And from the experiences I've had in these appeal hearings, we would be able to be more fair and more objective to the plaintiff, if you will, if we did have all the information ahead of time. I mean, we're doing them a favor by having it in advance, whereas if it's presented at the moment of the hearing itself, the plaintiff sometimes has put themselves at a disadvantage by doing so, from my perspective.
One of the things, I mean, you know, we're supposed to be, and this is what our job is, we're supposed to look at both sides, you know, both sides unbiased, and I mean, that's what our job is. And we're supposed to have all the information and look at that, you know, equally. And I hope, you know, that's why we're saying we need to have all that information before us. And beforehand, we have always been told, you know, so-and-so's going to have this or these people. And again, it's, to me, you know, we've been told, you know, these people are going to bring attorneys, or they're going to bring, you know, you know, these people. I mean, we usually are told that. And to me, it's, it's kind of unfair to say, okay, we're not going to say any, you know, we're not going to tell you anything, or we're not going to say who they're going to bring, because to me, that's unfair to both parties if they're not going to say who they're going to bring, because it's not fair to either party. I was thinking they were supposed to tell who they're going to bring. Is that not correct?
You know, they often do, but sometimes they don't tell us. I think the goal here is to have a set deadline and say if you're going to bring other witnesses, you know, you have two days, two days before the hearing, you need to let folks know. And here, it's both parties, so I think you get notice from the administration too who the witnesses are. But the idea is, by knowing ahead of time, everyone can be better prepared for the hearing. And I think that's the, we have not had a formal timing. So people, sometimes they'll tell us, "I'm bringing a lawyer, I'm going to bring another witness." Other times, they simply show up, and that can be, that can cause delays or uncertainty. What are they going to say? And now maybe we wish we had another witness to address that. So I think the goal in this revision is to have it two days before, which isn't that burdensome, because you should be thinking about what you're going to do, but that way both sides know who's coming and can be better prepared for the actual hearing. It doesn't mean the board could never hear anything that was later than that, but it may mean you're going to have to delay it if there's information that doesn't meet those deadlines and someone comes in. The board then has to discuss, is it important to keep this hearing date, or are we going to shove things back, because now we've gotten a last-minute notification? But I think that's the intent behind the revision, is to put a little more structure around something that hasn't been that structured.
Former board member Lynn Shue said a lot of smart things, but one of the things he said repeatedly was that we are by law, and as our structure allows, essentially a court and can act in that judicial or that capacity in lots of ways.
That's actual legislation.
And, and I, you know, I want to concur with him that the actions we take in that capacity ought to be as orderly and as fair and reasonable across all parties so that we can render a fair decision. I don't see a burden here in this policy, the way it's written.
All right, board members, you want to put on the action agenda for next week?
Put them both on action?
Huh?
Put them both on action?
Put 2500 and 7720 on action?
Yes.
And then 3460 and 6220, can that be on, can they be on consent? I'm hearing an agreement? Yes, okay.
Yeah, I have a question on 7720. It actually doesn't say approved leave in here, that I see, right? We've been using that phrase.
Yeah, that is correct, but that's what both Mr. Walters and Mr. Powell asked for last week and then you, last month, and you guys voted on a three to four not to go that direction, I think, is my understanding, from my notes. Yeah, I'm just, I was just trying to, though, I had to make some alternate wording, and it's like, but that approved leave is not in here. Correct.
Okay. All right, so we'll have 3460 graduation requirements, 6220 operation of school nutrition services on the consent agenda, 2500 hearings before the board, and 7720 employee political activities are on the action agenda for next week. That carries us to item six, 6.01, which is the academic fees list. Mr. Alred? Ms. Klutz is going to take care of this for us and present.
Mr. Alred couldn't be here tonight, so I asked the basket. You have the fees and the crosswalk from the previous year's fee, so that you can see any changes that occur and if we're required to bring this before the board and get board approval annually, so. Oh, sorry.
Are there any questions or concerns regarding the fee schedule?
I sent in a couple of questions, but I'll just ask them now, I guess, if that's okay, Dr. Lauter? The questions I sent about the fee schedule, just ask them now?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. So in the fee schedule, I noticed there is a pricing for yearbooks for six to 12. Elementary schools also have yearbooks. Do they need to have a price, approved price range?
So yearbook, I mean, when I was at the high school, yearbook wasn't on the list, and so I think that's been a recent addition, and I believe it was because the board asked to add it to this list, which, again, in my mind, yearbook is not necessarily a fee, it's an optional purchase to make.
Yeah.
But I think what somehow board members have been told, that at this school, it's this amount of money at this school, and so they were questioned that it be on the fee list.
Well, maybe just to control, because high school, some schools were getting, like, really crazy on their designs and stuff.
Right.
So, okay.
So again, but I would not consider that a fee.
So it probably doesn't need to be on there for elementary?
Yeah, well, I mean, I haven't heard of any negativity there, because it generally is a much more kind of functional, like they really just try to capture everybody in there. They're usually pretty cheap, and that doesn't mean that there might be 10 complaints out there. I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
And you're right, I think the reason the board asked for that before is because, again, you got to, with this school, it's all color, at this school, it's black and white, so you might have one $50 book, and over here, it's a $100 book. And kind of say, let's at least put a parameter on that. So I'm not, I mean, again, I don't, I don't think it's a hard thing to put in, I'm just not aware of any issues around it.
Is there a technology fee for the K5 STEM schools? There was for the upper, for middle school and high school, but not for elementary?
Not aware of any, not aware of any things.
Okay, so it wasn't just missed or whatever? Okay.
And those are, at high school, it's the iPad, it's the iPad fee, right?
For insurance.
And the other one was, is the insurance for that, and I think similar degrees, right? Those were, those two things were. But they don't have a device or anything that's a fee at elementary school that they're assigned or that they're responsible for.
Okay.
Ms. Klutz, I think of these fees as pass-through expenses. Is it pretty accurate that Jostens or other vendors who provide these services to us have a cost? We take in the money, we pay the cost, and that, all these things called fees basically zero out at the end of the exchange? To what extent are these true pass-throughs to vendors who provide services to us?
So I'm just, I'm taking a stab at this. I would say that most of these, especially the internal fees, and you can tell which ones are internal fees, are really just a, we're making up our cost and trying not to have a burden on other programs. The yearbook, those type things, and the Jostens, I mean, we work really hard to get bids and get competitive pricing so that the parents and the students don't have a burden. So is there any profit in there? I assume there probably is some, but I would say that it's minimal because of our processes that we use.
That's how I think of the fees. Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Well, since we're talking about that type of thing, the last fee on the bottom there has to do with transcripts, didn't we spend some money on getting some electronic?
Absolutely.
So are we recovering our fees here, or we're not? Not at that type of a cost?
Sure, that's a good question.
So that's kind of a little bit different.
Sure, that's a good question. So the dollars that the board has invested in scanning those pre, prior-year documents or former student records was just that, it was former student records. And so all of the transcripts go in electronically now, and if students want a copy of the transcript, they pay a fee, and that also helps us recover and do some of the former students that are still in storage kind of thing.
But it's still not cost recovery?
It is cost recovery. Most of it is cost recovery, but there is some that still, that allows us to build a little nest egg and continue to eat away at some of the scanned records that are old.
Okay, show me that sometime. Thank you.
Okay. Might need to, if you can just work with me and clarify what you want to see, I'm not sure.
I still don't see how $10 a transcript is cost recovery.
Okay. Okay. So we work with an outside organization, it's the fee that's charged for them to do that processing, and Dr. Probst is responsible for that area.
Okay, so this doesn't have anything to do with the scanning of the records, or does?
So we get a portion of that $10 back, comes back to us...
Okay.
...so that we can scan records that are sitting...
Well, you can explain this to me offline, so if I'm not quite getting it.
Okay.
Well, I've had a question asked to me on class rings, and I asked, yeah, because we don't have it listed, and that is a huge charge. And Jostens, or what's...
Jostens.
Yeah. And we don't have it listed, and they're the only ones that we see paying for class rings. And I know that there's other jewelers in this town that do class rings, and they're a lot cheaper than what they're charging. Now, why are we not letting them into the school system?
Okay, so we did address that this year, Ms. Carpenter, and what we have now is we're working with all of our high schools that will have a day where any jeweler, anyone that wants to sell class rings will be allowed to come in and do the same exact thing that Jostens does. Jostens was, were selling senior stuff, and so they would do the class rings at the same time. So when it was brought to our attention that we may have others that would be interested and that could possibly do it even cheaper for our students, then we make that available. We made that available this year. So that'll be the same moving forward.
Okay, so we...
So, all right, jewelers, you heard that, so you all can come to our schools.
We want to organize that, we'll organize that. We'll have a day where they can come sit up in the cafeteria with the rest of the vendors that would be interested in sale. There were, there were some concerns of how confusing that gets for students and parents, and our schools don't actually deal with the money, it's not a pass-through. They deal directly with the company, and when you have seven different companies and the kid wants to know, or a parent wants to know, well, who did I buy my class ring from? There was a lot of confusion, so I think that's kind of the reason why I ended up just going into one. But this year, again, we identified that and corrected it. So those that choose to next year will be allowed.
And so what I'd like for you to take from this conversation is that it's not a fee, it would not go on this list, and the money does not flow through the school, just, those are two separate items.
Well, you know, I knew that, but you know, it's still, it's on school property and, you know...
Sure, but it doesn't belong on this list, is what...
And that was one of my questions, you know, somebody comes to us and say, you know, it's at graduation time and somebody can't afford it, and still, it comes at our doorstep, and so I have to answer the question. And when you're looking at maybe $200 to $400 difference, I'm going, okay, I'll check it. So that was why the question came up.
Board members, any more questions for Ms. Klutz? Is this a item for consideration next week? Consent agenda, I mean?
Consent.
Consent? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Klutz. Mr. Rusty Parker will come forward, and he will talk to us about the Career Technical Education Local Plan for 2017-18. Welcome.
Thank you, Michael. You've seen the commercial with the PC guy and the Apple guy, I'm the PC guy, and all these MacBooks everywhere, so, Michael, help me out. This is the evening when I get to present the CTE Local Plan, and this is the application for state and federal funding so that we can run our CTE programs for 17-18 school year. So I'm going to go through some of this. What we've got on the board now is the outline. I'm going to start out talking just a little about what the local plan really is, and then also talk about some things that we've done this year as far as success stories that we've had, so we're going to go a year-end review. And then also, I'll talk about some of the CTE performance indicators, because our numbers look really good this year, and then also talk about the budget piece at the end. So the local planning system is actually a website that we use to- to house our local plan for CTE, and there's actually a link to it on the last slide of this PowerPoint that all of you should have access to. So you can actually go out there and read through the plan. The plan itself is split into two parts. The first part is the four-year planning component, and then the second part is actually the strategies that we're going to use to improve instruction in CTE. To discuss just a little bit about what the four-year plan is about, the four-year plan itself is supposed to show exactly how CTE fits in line with several stakeholders. And one note that I wanted to make that is not on the PowerPoint up here is that I made sure that our four-year plan aligns with the new Cabarrus County Schools Strategic Plan. So CTE aligns directly with Goal One, Two, and Three in the plan. So when you look at it online, you'll see that I specifically made reference to those strategies and those goals within the CCS Strategic Plan. But also, our plan is to- Michael, hang on just one second. The last piece and the last two bullets are what I want to talk about, detailed community employment and demographic information. If you look at the plan, you'll see a lot in there about how we try to support initiatives that help against the unemployment rate. There's some documentation in there about different employers that are in their community. There's information in there about the Economic Development Commission, there's also information in there about the chamber and events that they hold. So a lot of it is demographic information, but it's also how we line up with the community and their initiatives, so. Part two is what I've got on the slide now, it's performance management. And I want to talk a little bit about this, because this is some of the new initiatives that we're looking at for 17-18 school year. Third-party support, we're looking at certain vendors to support us from a third-party perspective. The first one, obviously, is National Academy Foundation. I think everybody in the room knows a little bit about NAF. So we have five NAF academies in our school district, and so we're going to continue that relationship with them, and that is also included in the budget for this 17-18 school year. But one thing that I'm looking to do new is to align with International Center for Leadership and Education, which is the same company that sponsors the Model Schools Conference that Harris Road Middle School is presenting at. I was already looking at this, and I was thrilled to hear that Tri-Paldrage was- was a model school this year, because I was already looking at this company. But what they do is they provide support to districts with instructional coaching. They come in and provide support as far as doing an evaluation of a curriculum area, and they're- they do kind of like, "Where are you now and where do you want to be?" kind of scenario. So this past Friday, I had a conference call with Dr. Bill Daggett, who was their chairman, and so he was very much aware of what we're trying to do in Cabarrus County Schools, and he said that he would love to work with us. So I was thrilled that he was open to at least having a conference call with me and talking for a little bit. The second bullet up there, the major bullet, is professional development. For the coming school year, I want instructional coaching to be a piece for Career and Tech Ed. We in CTE have great content knowledge, you meet our teachers, and Dave's a perfect example, great content knowledge about technology and business and finance and the things that we teach. But so many times, we have lateral entry teachers come in that may not know the instructional methods piece. So what I want to focus on for 17-18 is that PD piece and how to improve instruction in the classroom, working with instructional strategy, so that's what that's up there for. And also, they do a program evaluation. The state has come out with a new document that allows districts to evaluate their programs, either by the specific teacher, an entire program area like business or IT, or the whole district as a whole. And so what we're going to do is use that document that the state provides to also do an evaluation of the CTE department to see where we've got some gaps and instruction that we need to improve on. The last piece is cross-department alliance. I'm also working, and you'll see this in the four-year planning component and in the performance piece, is cross-department alliance is working with the departments in our school system. So one of the things I've done is met with Barb Slengeland, who's our EC director, to look at how CTE and EC can partner, because a lot of the EC students come through Career and Tech Ed. So in our hands-on curriculum, it just parlay's really well with the EC piece. So also up there on the bottom one is working with school counselors, and I've already met with Sue Burns and their team, and presented some things about virtual job shadow and career counseling and that type of thing to their staff. CTE enrollment, our numbers are going up. This year, I think we've got almost nineteen thousand students in CTE courses. That's high school and middle school, so what you've got up there now is fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, and how our numbers are growing. So we love to see that number go up. This slide, I want to talk a little bit about a success that we had this year in CTE. One of the things that I wanted to do in coming into this position is to look at how we brand Career and Tech Ed to not only internal stakeholders, but also externally when we're out in the business community. A big piece of my job is not in this building. A lot of times, I am in front of business community constantly, talking about internships or how our programs align with EDC. Those types of conversations are happening outside of this building. So what I wanted to do was to create a packet of information, and I gave everybody around the table one. So you should have a packet that we created in CTE that is the start or the kickoff of our rebranding and marketing campaign for CTE. And the way that I want to use this packet is to go out to a business and talk about internships, to talk about our programs and how the business community can be involved as a guest speaker, how they can come into the school system. I wanted something as a leave behind. So what we started doing this year was working with a consultant that helped us rebrand CTE. So what you've got is our new logo. If you see the cube on the- on the handouts, that cube is the- is the acronym CTE. And then also, we came up with a new tagline called "Conquer Tomorrow," and that is kind of how we're rebranding Career and Technical Education, is to help every student conquer their tomorrow in our school system. So this is a packet that I wanted to leave with you today, but also, this is what I'm going to- the handouts that are actually in the packet are really in a draft format, because we're also going to put some information there about internships and about our academies and what we offer in the school system, so there'll be more to the packet. But this is just the start, so, but I wanted you at least to get it in your hands today. So you are the first to see it. I haven't even released this to anybody else, you guys get it first. So this is the- this is the kickoff. But you'll see that- that brand and that logo a lot more, because also, when I present it, chamber events and anywhere around the business community, I'm going to make sure that this is part of the presentation, so you'll see it again. What's on the board now is a great success for CTE. We have done a fantastic job in Cabarrus County Schools with credentialing. Each year, our credential numbers keep increasing, so this year, or actually, for 15-16, our credential numbers were thirty-one hundred, yeah, three thousand one hundred twenty-four credentials, which is, again, an increase. I don't have any preliminary numbers for the current school year, but we should have those sometime in August, September. I have some numbers to show you. And this up here now is a list of the credentials that we offer. I think a lot of people know about the Work Keys Assessments, but we also offer the Adobe certifications at Mount Pleasant High School, Autodesk is for drafting classes, Microsoft Office certifications are for the Microsoft IT academies, ServSafe is for the foods program, and then for carpentry and masonry, offer the NCCR credentials, fire safeties are at Concord High School at the Public Safety Academy, and then we offer the rest of that nurse aid, and OSHA is for health sciences, and that's pretty much at every high school. So that's just a sampling of some of the credentials that we offer. Very briefly, I want to go through some performance indicators and kind of show you where we stand with the other school districts in our affinity group. This is the ten largest school districts in the state. And so what I got up here now is how CTE supports reading and language arts. As part of the Carl Perkins legislation, CTE is supposed to specifically show in each LEA how they support initiatives for reading, language, arts, and also for mathematics. So what I've got on the board is our proficiencies for the English Language Arts piece, which is fifty point three percent, which we're right in the middle of the pack with that bunch right there. The next slide is also for math, and we're pretty much in the same bunch, we're number four on that list, so forty-two point six percent. And this data is specifically for students that were CTE concentrators that finished a four-course concentration. The next slide, two S one, this is the one that a lot of people may be familiar with. This is the- our CTE post-assessments or in-the-course exams. This is not CTE concentrators, this is actually every student that took a CTE course, they're required to take an in-the-course exam. So this is our proficiency for all of those students in that 15-16 school year, and we were at seventy-nine point six percent. I think the state average was eighty-one or point five or eighty-two percent, so we're a little below the state average, but we're right up there with the rest of those bunch. The- the next two slides are about graduation. Three S one is the- the graduation rate for every student that graduated. Four S one is actually for the cohort graduation rate. So right now, for three S one, we're at ninety-one- ninety-nine point one percent. I calculated that up, and I think that was maybe ten kids, so that did not graduate. So that number for us is really high. You can see we're in fine company with those numbers. CTE is a great program to keep students in school. I made sure that I put this one in alphabetical order, because look who's first. I wanted to make sure that we were at the top. So we're all- there's several school districts at ninety-nine percent, but I made sure that Cabarrus was at number one. But you can see a lot of the- the school districts in our affinity rankings, they're actually very high, and this is consistent across the state. When you look at every size school district, they're all in the ninety-nine percent range, so. The five S one, you may have heard of something called the concentrator feedback survey. We actually have to do a survey every spring, we just finished it in March, to see where students, when they left our school system, where did they go? So, and that's actually part of the Carl Perkins legislation, it's a requirement, so we have to find out where did they go. So someone that was a- a student that was a CTE concentrator, did they go into the military? Did they go into education? Did they get a job? And so this is basically our CTE unemployment rate. So right now, at ninety-nine point one percent of the CTE concentrators in our district from last school year, they are in some type of employment, further education, or in the military. So they- they made the choice to go on and further their education or in their employment. The- the last two that are up here, they- they are for non-traditional participation and non-traditional completion, and to kind of explain what that is, that's girls in automotive-